I'll call the May fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Chester.
Here.
Mr. Cho.
Here.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Mr. Roche.
Here.
Ms. Yutman.
Mr. Wormbrun.
Here.
Mr. Welch.
Here. I believe we have a quorum. Are there any changes to our agenda?
No, sir.
At this time, I would ask that we look at the minutes. I trust that everyone has had time to look at the minutes. Do we have any motions?
I just noticed one small typo.
Okay, we have a correction.
Could you be sure to speak into the mic since Terry?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
There is just on the top, I don't think it printed it out, but on the top where it says members present and then I think under it's supposed to say members absent.
We didn't fix that from last time.
I know. It's fine.
All right, that is so noted. Any other corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes to the March twenty, I'm sorry, what was the date of that meeting? Yeah, March twenty, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
It has been so moved, do we have a second?
Second.
Excuse me, would the members indicate their approval by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same? Hearing nothing, the minutes are approved. Do we have any communications?
No.
No.
Okay.
Any continued public hearings?
No.
All right, then, at this time, I would swear in, member of the audience.
That's you, Kim.
Do you swear that any testimony that you give here tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Shall I come up here?
Not quite. We have two cases before us tonight, but they involve the same property, so we're gonna hear the two cases together, but vote on them, vote on the issue separately. So at this time, I would call for hearing ZBA twenty nineteen C dash oh one, a request by Kim Hubbard for a conditional use permit to allow a second principal structure at eight twelve South Race Street in the R three, single and two-family residential zoning district. This time, we will also call for hearing ZBA twenty nineteen major dash oh one, a request by Kim Hubbard for a major variance to allow a reduction from ten feet in the required rear yard setback to five feet at eight twelve South Race Street in the R three, single and two-family residential zoning district. Do we have a staff report?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, before we get started, I would just want to clear up something. So the staff memo went out with a fairly standard proposed condition, which is that the proposed structure's location and construction generally conform to the attached site plan and specifications, which is Exhibit D. It took a little bit of time, but we had to, we were proposing adding two additional conditions. So I wanted to pull those up right now, because they were not in the staff memo. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, so when the applicant would come to the city with a building permit, the owner applicant will sign a deed restriction to run with the land that will require the proposed structure may not be sold separately from the land and subdivided. And then the second one would be the proposed structure can be no taller than twenty-five feet from the grade of the property. So with that, I would like to move on to the regular staff report. So as you read in the memo, the applicant is Kim Hubbard of eight twelve South Race Street. The purpose of these two applications was to reconstruct a garage, tear down the current existing one, and reconstruct it as a two-car garage with an apartment upstairs. The applicant specified that it would be their mother who would want to live in the apartment upstairs. The applicant is applying for also a major variance to build a principal structure within five feet of the rear lot line. Section five dash three C allows a second principal structure of the same principal use and also of any use that is allowed by right. So, really fast while we're introducing you to, introducing you to the property. We have Exhibit A. We're at the corner of Race and Washington. The lot is very interesting. In this particular case, there are a couple of things that are interesting about, and we'll get into that with the conditional and the major variance criteria, but it is a cornered lot. It's a single-family home currently. It's surrounded by, adjacent to it is an apartment building, a single-family home on both the north and the east side, and duplexes on the south side. You have the zoning map, and this is the current zoning that is surrounding the subject parcel. It's R three for most of that block, R two to the south, R four, that's just west of there, and so it's pretty, R three is our single and two-family zoning district. And then here's the future land use map, residential for the subject parcel and the surrounding area. South of there is institutional, as it's very close to Urbana High School, and then a community business in the corner at Race and Washington. Here is Exhibit D. This is the applicant's site plan, proposed garage apartment, which would be twenty-one by twenty feet wide, so just over four hundred square feet, and a new driveway that would be accommodate two cars in the two-car garage, which would be sixteen feet. And as you can see up in the corner there, it is five feet, the line to the, at the top is the rear lot line, and that five feet is what the major variance pertains to, and then five feet from the side lot line. And then here's Exhibit E. This one was an aerial that was created by staff to really show the lot lines. You can see in the dotted green lines are the five-feet setbacks, and then ten feet for the front, for the rear yard, and fifteen feet for the front, from the front lot line. There is a single-family house. Black lines are the existing garage and existing driveway, with the red lines being the proposed site plan for a new garage apartment and new driveway. There's also two trees. That's very important for the criteria for the major variance, so we'll be talking about So let's talk about the conditional use permit application right now. ZBA twenty nineteen C dash oh one. Section V three C, Table of Uses by District, is the title of the section, and I'm gonna paraphrase a little bit, but allows an additional principal structure of a permitted use with a conditional use permit. There are a couple of other criteria, but they're really more procedural. There has to be a permit, a use that is allowed by right. It would need additional conditional use, if it was a use that was allowed by conditional use, additional special use permit, if allowed by a special use permit. And it's, the lot is not a part of a PUD, and otherwise would conform to our zoning ordinance. I will say too, as a quick side note, two-family dwellings slash duplexes are allowed by right in this district, but this is two single-family dwellings, which is what requires a conditional use permit. So I'm gonna move on to the criterias, the criteria for conditional uses. The first criteria for conditional use permits, which you can find in Section seven-two of the zoning ordinance, that the proposed use is conducive for public convenience at that location. The requested CUP, which is a conditional use permit, is conducive to the public convenience because of the garage apartment will not, will not add any more density than what is currently allowed on this lot if it contained a duplex. The garage apartment will match the form of any buildings on the block. Also, the driveway will not be moved any closer to the intersection of Race Street and Washington Street, so the proposal should not cause any inconvenience with traffic flow. The second requirement for conditional use permit, that the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located, or otherwise injurious to the public welfare. Staff noted that the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated in a manner similar to the surroundings and the R three zoning district in general. The applicant's design will keep the already mature trees intact with, and will keep the driveway at the same distance from the intersection. A duplex is a permitted use in the R three zoning district, and the proposed use will therefore not be operated in a detrimental fashion to the district. The third condition, that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of, and preserves the essential character of, the district in which it shall be located, except where such regulations and standards are modified by Section seven dash three. The proposed second principal structure will conform with all applicable development regulations, except for the required rear yard. The major variance requested by the applicant would keep both trees on the eastern half of the lot, and will not move the driveway any closer to the intersection of Race Street and Washington Street. This will help preserve the character of the neighborhood. With that, we will move to the major, the major variance criteria. And I really fast wanted to, for the major variance criteria, pull up what was in the staff memo where we have our development regulations. All development regulations, as you can see, the subject property meets, and with the existing and the proposed use that we're talking about today. You can see that the FAR will go up to zero point two seven, the OSR will go down to two point three. Required FAR is point four. Minimum open space ratio is point four. As far as the yards, there is thirty feet in the front, there's five feet on the side, and in the rear yard, we're legally non-conforming at eight feet with the existing garage, and we would be going down to five feet, which is the major variance that we're talking about tonight. And a note about garages, garages themselves, generally speaking, are allowed within eighteen inches of a property line. They are allowed in that ten feet of the rear yard. This is a principal structure that houses an accessory use, which is car storage, so, which pertains to kind of, goes hand-in-hand with our conditional use permit and why we're talking about this tonight. And I just wanted to pull out the page that we're really talking about here. This is from Article six, and it's in our yards section where we say, as you can see down in the corner, garages can be within eighteen inches of your property lines in all residential zoning districts. So the criteria for a major variance. The first criteria, are there special circumstances or special practical difficulties with reference to the parcel concerned in carrying out the strict application of the ordinance? The zoning ordinance requires a ten-foot rear yard for the R three zoning district, so no principal structure may be built within ten feet of a rear property line. As this is a cornered lot, the eastern lot line, and I think, as you guys can kind of remember, and I can pull it up, in the corner of Washington and Race, and so all properties on Washington have their driveways facing Washington. This property has their driveway facing Washington, but the front door and the shortest, the shortest property line would be on the Race Street side. So that making it the front yard line, it's kind of difficult as far as how the driveway is concerned. It is on the other side, which would be a side yard, otherwise. The location of the two trees on the eastern half of the lot create a practical difficulty in carrying out the requirements of the zoning ordinance. As discussed above, various locations were considered for the proposed garage, but locations would meet the requirements. All other locations that would meet requirements would either require removing a mature tree or moving the driveway closer to the intersection. The second variance criteria, the proposed variance will not serve as a special privilege because the variance requested is necessary due to special circumstances related to the land or structure involved or to be used for occupancy thereof, which is not generally applicable to other lands or structures in the same district. Whereas the staff memo responds to that, the proposed reduction in the rear yard will not be a special privilege to the applicant, the variance is needed to keep a mature spruce tree, and the five-foot setback will match the character of the other homes along Washington Street. The third variance criteria, the variance request is not the result of a situation or condition having been knowingly or deliberately created by the petitioner. The variance request is due to the location of the trees on the lot, which were not planted by the applicant, and the driveway, the driveway which should be kept as far from the intersection as possible for safety and traffic concerns. The fourth variance criteria, the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. If granted, the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Two-family residences are allowed by right in the neighborhood. There are duplexes and multifamily residences adjacent to this property. The proposed two-car garage will replace the existing garage, and garages as accessory structures are allowed within eighteen inches of the property line. Many garages in the neighborhood, including garages on the neighboring properties, are within five feet of the rear property line. And I think we should strike that and say side, side property line. There are also homes on Washington Street that are five feet from the property line, that's referring to the side property line. So the proposal will not be out of character. The fifth variance criteria, the variance will not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property. The variance should not cause a nuisance to the proposed garage apartment that will be five feet from the property line, similar to other structures in the neighborhood, and matching the setback for other lots facing Washington Street. If the variance is not granted, at least one mature tree would have to be removed, which could, could be a negative outcome for the neighborhood. The sixth variance criteria, the variance generally represents the minimum deviation for, from requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate the request. The proposed building is sighted as close to the existing trees as possible without causing harm to them. And I will say that Mike Brunk, the city arborist, went out and did talk to the applicant before they submitted these applications, trying to find a way that they could keep both trees. Not possible for the structure to be farther from the rear property line while keeping a safe distance from the trees. The request therefore represents a minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance necessary. So, with that, before I get to options, I want to go through the summary of staff findings. The first, the property is zoned R three, single and two-family residential. The second, Kimberly Hubbard requests a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a second principal structure. The third, the use is conducive to the public convenience at that location. The fourth, the use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located, or otherwise injurious or detrimental to the public welfare. The fifth, the use will conform to all applicable zoning, buildings, building and development codes, except the rear yard setback for principal structures of which a major variance is requested. Six, Kimberly Hubbard also requests a major variance to reduce the required rear yard from ten feet to five feet. Seven, the variance will allow two mature trees to be saved, and for the driveway to maintain its distance from the intersection of Race Street and Washington Street. Eight, the variance request would not serve a special privilege to the property owner if granted, as there are special circumstances relating to the land, such as location of mature trees and access drive location. Nine, the property owner did not deliberately create this situation. Ten, the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Eleven, the variance will not create a nuisance. And twelve, the variance represents a minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance. So at this time, I'm gonna go through the options for the conditional use permit. The Zoning Board of Appeals has the following options in case ZBA nineteen C dash oh one. The first would be to approve the conditional use permit, or two, approve the conditional use permit along with any other conditions as appropriate for the public health, safety, and welfare, and carry out the purposes of the zoning ordinance, or three, deny the conditional use permit. I don't know if we want to go on to the options for the major variance, or should we?
Sure, because they probably want to discuss it together.
Yes, that makes a lot of sense. Yes, thank you. The Zoning Board of Appeals has the following options for ZBA nineteen in major variance dash zero one. One, forward the major variance request to City Council with a recommendation to approve the variance as requested based on the findings outlined in this memorandum, or two, forward the major variance to City Council with the recommendation to approve the variance with certain terms and conditions, and if so, articulate all terms, conditions, and findings, or three, deny the major variance request, and if so, articulate findings supporting And I'm going to mention staff recommendation. Staff recommends, based on the analysis and findings presented above, and without the benefit of considering additional evidence that may be presented at the public hearing, staff recommends the Zoning Board of Appeals to approve the conditional use permit with the following condition, that the proposed structure, structure's location and construction generally conform to the attached site plan and specifications, as well as, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the owner slash applicant will sign a deed restriction to run with the land, that will require the proposed structure may not be sold separately with the land and subdivided. And third, the proposed structure can be no taller than twenty-five feet from the grade of the property. Staff's presentation.
If I could just tack on to that, this might be splitting hairs a little bit, but I think it's important, while the conditions are shown as being recommended for just the conditional use permit, I think it's important to understand that the conditional use permit, if it is not constructed within a year, expires, but the major variance continues on forevermore. So it is probably important to include at least the first and the third conditions in the major variance as well, should you be concerned that, of the height of the structure or that it wouldn't conform to the site plan that's shown.
Are there any questions for staff?
Can you go into detail about number two? It's, I've never seen something like this, and is that something that is within the scope of our board?
Yeah, that's a really great question. So I was doing, I did a little bit of research. In Community Development Services, we do do deed work, usually when it comes to grants. And then the second, so we had a little bit of help from experienced people with this, but we also too, a lot of places call these accessory dwelling units. So accessory dwelling units, they're common, a lot of them are pretty common on the West Coast, but they're, they're something that are defined in Minneapolis and some other places in the Midwest. And for all of those places, they have these deed restrictions to, to stop, say, a garage apartment, for instance, from being sold off as an individual structure or piece of land. And that is something that the city in the past has had problems with, and more particularly, I have seen the county having problems with this, and then the city of Urbana annexing those into it, and then we have to kind of deal with our zoning ordinance and also other regulations in our, for the city of Urbana, that have, that can't really exist very well with, with, you know, illegally subdivided land. So currently, it would be illegal to do that, and in theory, it would be caught several different times. When you record a deed restriction to go with it, it shows up faster on a title search. It's a little bit easier for people to know, oh, hey, I probably shouldn't buy this thing that's illegally subdivided, this will be a problem. Or for someone who was told that there's like two things, anybody who does a title search for them will be able to say, oh, hey, this is actually all one lot, not something. And again, there should be like a lot of places where this is caught, before it was sold, before money was exchanged, before it gets recorded, but sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes mistakes are made, and this would, that's why a lot of places that allow these accessory dwelling units require this.
Yes, my question is then, are we a hundred percent able to legally bind the property as such? Back to my previous question, is this within the scope of a ZBA board?
It is.
Where, I'm assuming the process for deeding property and subdividing it lies with another body?
Want me to take that?
Yes, you can, for sure.
So what this condition does is it says, in order to get this conditional use permit, you need to sign this piece of paper that says that you won't illegally subdivide it, basically. And because this condition is tied to an approval of a conditional use permit, it's certainly within the purview of this board, because it's tied to the land. So we're saying, if you want to do this use, you have to do this thing. So it's, it's linked.
I, I do have a question, though.
Yeah.
If there was, for some reason, that the, the property owner, this property owner or a future property owner, a hundred years from now, wanted to, wanted to sell the unit to the next-door neighbor, would there be a provision currently on the books that would allow them to do that?
Yeah, good question. No, not at all. That would be really against the law, and it would be a huge bummer that their neighbor would even suggest that, because they'll probably have to pay someone to tell them, probably a lawyer, that would be like, hey, you know, this is expensive, but you really shouldn't do that. But also, the city will come in and say, hey, you really can't do that, and so...
So there's, there's no appeal to subdivide property in the city?
No, 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 not at all, for this lot, because this lot...
I'm saying, without, without us making this provision.
Oh.
If we did not make this provision, would it be possible for someone to subdivide the lot if they followed a different procedure?
Right.
A legal procedure?
Now I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
So if we don't, if you don't want to go forward with a condition, you can't do that.
It's still illegal to do.
It's still legal to do it.
This is just a way to prevent us having to enforce on something that's already done versus prevent something that's illegal to do.
Which is why a lot of cities with accessory dwelling units have that, is so it's a big red flag, a big stop sign saying, hey, before you go any further down this process, you should probably read all the documents that come along with your property.
Okay, but I guess that's my question, is that our job to enforce, or is that what you're saying when I do want to subdivide or deed my property differently? I'm not coming to ZBA to ask for that, right? That's another body that does that. And so for us to actually implement this, that would be, or add this on as a condition would be kind of outside of the scope of what this board normally does?
No, the major variance is gonna run with the land. The deed restriction would come along with the conditional use, but also the major variance. And so that, this is actually something that Community Development Services, we do for various other things too as well. And so if we want to do, and, and this is where, you know, planners get involved too, is if we want to do more of these, making flexible, if your lot is allowed to have two families on it, but it's not just a traditional duplex, you know, we want to be able to ensure that we can actually save any future person a hundred years from now, or also save any future city person from a hundred years from now, and save all sorts of probably other people that I'm not thinking of in this process.
I'm, I'm just thinking of a situation, though, a hundred years from now, where the city changes its code where things could be divided, but now this property has a deed restriction on it where it is outside of any future code.
We're gonna work that in so that it accommodates that, because that's certainly something we've thought of, yeah.
Okay.
So basically, we'd need to meet the requirements at the time. So, yeah, this is just a protection measure.
That would be like the property too, like the deed saying that it's part of Champaign County but not in Urbana, but then all of a sudden it is in Urbana, and now, a hundred years later.
Okay.
Certain things do change.
Okay.
Go ahead.
One of the things that happens if somebody tried to sell it, was that you would create two lots that would be, instead of having one legal-sized lot, you would have two lots that don't meet the requirement of open- that don't meet the requirement of open space or whatever.
Yes, yes. So there's a lot of things that would be in violation of, and not everybody who's buying a house is really aware that there are certain requirements for that when they're buying a house. You're usually given a stack of like 300 papers, and you don't have time to read all of them. So this would be hopefully saving the person who buys the lot that kind of, that title problem.
But that's the assumption that it has already been deeded by whatever body that does that to separate it into two lots, right?
I'm sorry, what?
That's the assumption if I, if the owner of this decides to sell that half of that single-family garage residence, it has gone through the process of deeding it into a separate lot, which is not our body, right?
That would be the city of Urbana. We handle subdivisions within the city and anything around our city, the, our extra, extrajurisdictional area, which is one and a half miles from the city of Urbana.
I'm just uncomfortable with that second condition. I've never seen it before, nor do I believe that it's part of our purview. I think that, you know, it adds a lot more constraints than what we're able to vote on. Saving the trees, you got me at that, so I'm ready to say yes.
Well, one of the things that has happened in the past is that people illegally sell parcels like this, and they get them platted, not they get them platted, they get them recorded illegally, because they have subdivided something without going through the subdivision requirements. And, and the recorder of deeds will accept any document, and it, and they don't, they don't check to see if it's legal or not legal. They accept it, and then it becomes a real mess for people.
Absolutely. I've seen that happen.
What instances, I guess, I don't care, but it still has to get deeded by another body, not us?
No, it would be in agreement with, with...
No, no, if I wanted to subdivide a property that I owned into two lots, what would be my process?
You would come to, you would come to planning division.
Do you mean legally, or do you mean illegally as Chester?
Legally.
Legally, yeah. There's an application online, you turn it into Vivian in the front of community development services, one of us planners would talk to you about it. I would tell you to get a surveyor and a lawyer, and we would go through the process and make sure that everything kind of checks out. But there are requirements that we're going to be looking for, and that Ameren's going to be looking for, and utility companies are going to be looking for, and that we look for. And so that's the process of it. It goes out to review for all those public agencies before it gets recorded, and it's signed off on by, it's signed off by the director of public works, it's signed off by the director of community development services, signed off by Lori.
So someone would have to royally screw up to basically subdivide this property into two?
And what Joanne had mentioned is that people sometimes royally screw up.
So for our scope, again, back to my question, is that for ZBA to add this constraint that I've never seen before, nor do I believe that we're legally allowed to?
I believe I can answer your question. This is an appeal board body, and what we are being asked to do is approve a contractual issue between the applicant and the city, or add a contractual issue. And bodies are free to add conditions, as long as you're not adding illegal conditions to agreements. The enforcement of that is not, you're right, it's not our concern, but neither is the enforcement of anything that we approve. That goes to someone else. So there, if the, if the applicant is comfortable with this condition, then I don't think there's anything wrong with this being part of the application or permit, or however you want to phrase it, so.
I guess I, I just somewhat agree with Mr. Cho philosophically about setting a precedent that this board will set these kinds of conditions when it's already against the law to not subdivide these. And it's already a law on the books that this lot can't be subdivided, so...
Mr. Chair, I just want to remind you that this is technical questions, and the public has not spoken yet.
And whether or not a public agrees, I think we've been through these cases before where we've actually enforced homeowners' rights, which are not part of our zoning ordinance, and that is a precedent that I don't want to even uphold as a ZBA board, nor do I think that's even within our scope.
Are there any further questions or comments to the staff? Does the petitioner wish to be heard on her application?
Okay.
All right. Does, however, does anyone have any questions for the petitioner? Why don't you come forward to the table? And just sign in for us. Now, you don't wish to add anything, correct? All right, that's fine. Does anyone have any questions for the petitioner? All right, hearing none, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any additional comments, questions, or concerns regarding these two All right, hearing none, that at this time, as I said, we need to vote separately on these because they have different voting requirements. The conditional use requires just a simple majority, and the major variance, two-thirds?
That's correct.
Yes, two-thirds, and that would be forwarded then on to the city council for their input and additional voting. So at this time, does anyone have any motions regarding ZBA 2019C-01?
I move that we approve ZBA case 2019-C-01 with the following conditions. Number one, that the proposed structure's location and construction generally conformed to the attached site plan and specifications, which is Exhibit D. Number two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the owner applicant will sign a deed restriction to run with the land, that will require the proposed structure may not be sold separately from the land and subdivided. And number three, the proposed structure can be no taller than 25 feet from the grade of the property.
It's been moved, excuse me, do we have a second to that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the motion that we strike the second condition, that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the owner applicant will sign a deed restriction to run with the land, that will require the proposed structure may not be sold separately from their land and subdivided.
How do we deal with that, then?
You need a second.
Okay, yes, we have amendment and the second.
Did man have a second, Pat?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that the first motion had to be voted on, or the amender could accept a friendly motion and kind of do it that way. But I am a little foggy on that.
I'm not up on...
If we're under Robert's rules of order, the first motion is under discussion, and a motion can then be brought forward to amend the emotion under, under discussion, which means we're now discussing the second motion that, of the amendment, which, after discussion of it, can be voted up or down, and then we vote on the motion, original motion.
I agree with that.
Let me check the bylaws to see if we follow Robert's rules or not.
We do. We never do, but...
And I'm sorry, Mr. Warren, did you say you, you agree with that assessment?
I agree with the assessment that we should be discussing the amendment right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there discussion regarding the amendment?
I'll just say the reason why I made the amendment, moved the amendment, was because I feel that this particular condition is unnecessary, because it's already a law on the books, that the lot can't be subdivided.
Can I pose a question?
Go ahead. Yes.
What, I guess what is the burden, additional burden that's being placed, based on number two? If it's already a law and it's just like a procedural step?
The additional burden is the fact that there is a lien being put on this title, and I don't, basically, right? Something's being attached to the title of this lot, basically.
There's something to be attached, but it's not a lien.
Okay, well, not a lien, I'm, I'm using the improper language. There is a, what would the proper language be from our staff?
Yeah, so it'd be, and it actually says what, what we're working off from what our legal department's working on for. An agreement, a deed agreement, and that, so we would call it either a deed agreement or deed restriction. Honestly, deed restriction was something that I, I think I first read on Minneapolis's zoning ordinance, so that's kind of why I went with that word. But I think the two, we're currently asking legal this, but we're, we're asking for clarification for which were deed agreement or deed restriction. It would just be a red flag for a title search.
Again, not within the scope of this board.
I thought we clarified it was within the scope.
We can add, we can add things, but this, to me, is, again, back to one of the cases where we upheld a homeowners association.
I don't know what you're referring to, and I don't know if that's relevant.
The Airbnb case, the Airbnb case. I think this starts dipping into a gray area. I'm totally comfortable with one and two, that's what we've always been doing, but the idea that we need to basically handcuff this property owner even more as a board...
That's what I'm unclear on, it doesn't seem like it's an additional...
But to add any, as any property owner, to add a lien or any kind of deed restriction onto property is, is not within our purview.
And it, and it's not something we did.
No, but we upheld a homeowner's right.
I keep reminding you that this is an agreement that the petitioner has accepted, it's a contract.
I'm, I'm aware of that, but at the same time, we can't case by case this, because if we want to go back to the Airbnb case, all our R1 Airbnbs, if I want to open up a can of worms right now, should go under the same bed and breakfast, homeowners ordinance, because we upheld it once. And so this is the can of worms that I think that we're asked to solve, problems that are not within our scope, and we're adding to add handcuffs to people that obviously were willing to accept it, because yes.
We're not, we're not adding anything, that's what I keep telling you.
If you ask me to ask, put a deed or restriction on any of my properties, of course, that is a restriction on anything that I own. And whether I do it 50 years from now, 100 years from now, that is still a restriction, which is not within our zoning board of appeals' scope.
All right. Any further comments? Then I believe we will vote on first to accept the amendment? All right.
Okay.
Can we have a roll call?
So a vote for yeses for the amendment, a vote no is against the amendment?
And the amendment, to remind everyone...
Yes would be to strike down the second condition.
Yes.
Okay, so the question is, should you take out condition two?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Chester?
No.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
No.
Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Welch?
No. The motion is voted down. Now, we will then call ZBA 2019-C-01 for a vote.
Ms. Chester? Mr. Cho?
No.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes, that motion carries, and it is approved. We will now call ZBA-2019major-01 for a vote. This, being a major variance, requires a two-thirds vote for approval from this board to then forward the case on to the city council for their review. So maybe we have a, all right, question?
So the staff wanted the first and third condition on this major variance?
Should the board think that there should be conditions limiting the height and the location and the general specifications of the application, since this does run with the land, not with the actual application itself?
Sure. I'll move that we accept the ZBA 2019major-01 with the condition that the proposed structure's location and construction gradually conform, is that, wait, I'm sorry, is that the part, generally conform to the attached site plans and specifications, and the proposed structure can be no taller than 25 feet from the grade of the property?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Chester?
I don't understand what just happened.
We're doing the variance?
We're voting on this one, it's been moved and seconded.
Thank you. Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Rush, Mr. Rush, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes, that motion, excuse me, carried by the necessary vote, so it can be forwarded on to the city council for what meeting?
June 3rd.
For their June 3rd meeting. Thank you. All right. Do we have any old business?
No.
Do we have any new business?
No.
There is no audience, so we have no audience participation, is there a staff report?
Lily has something quick, while she's pulling it up, I'll just, you don't often hear about other cases that have been resolved, so I just wanted to give you an update. The U-Haul on Philo, which you've seen a couple of different times as a conditional use permit, has pretty much completed its landscaping that was required, after a lot of planning and back and forth and conversations with the arborists, I wanted to let you know that. And I also wanted to let you know that we will go back probably late summer to make sure everything has survived, so just an update on that.
And I just wanted to bring up, so the city of Urbana is participating in an event for the bike ride, with Bike Month, and we are having Bike with the Mayors, with the mayor of Urbana, the mayor of Champaign, and the village president of Savoy. We're starting at the Fukuoka parking lot in downtown Urbana at 6:00, so be there with your bicycle. It'll be tons of fun, we're going to bike all the way to downtown Champaign, and in at Maze of, in the old train station, so. Of which, after that, will be a Riving Plan Commission meeting, which you should promptly bike back for.
Anything to study?
No, sir.
All right, then, I move that we adjourn.